Radio 5G, this is Michael Henry Dunn. And today is Wednesday, June 12th. Radio 5G is a joint project of CosmicReality.net and the Sacred Academy of Geoenergetics. And we've got an amazing amount of exciting updates to share with you from yesterday's crucial meeting in New Mexico. And I'm joined by my amazing co-host Nancy L. Hopkins of Cosmic Reality. Good morning, good afternoon to you in South Florida, Nancy.
Yes, and thank you very much. Yeah, it's, well, it's going to be an interesting show, let's put it that way. Now, I don't know if you saw the promo, but I have the pictures of the people that were on the county commission, council, council, I guess, councilman, and the mayor, and then the three ladies that were with us a couple of weeks ago, Reese and Jeannie and...
Falcon.
Falcon.
Right.
So, the people up there that are on chat can see it, others will, you can see it if you see the promo on Cosmic Reality Facebook group, or the chat, go to the chat.
Ah, okay.
And so that you'll know the players.
Right, yeah, can't know the players without a scorecard, and there you go, folks.
As a matter of fact, I'm going to drop it in here, so you've got it in front of you, too.
Oh, okay, yeah, that'll help. Well, just to let everybody know what took place in the last couple of days, I went down to Taos, New Mexico, from my spot here, high in the mountains of southern Colorado, to be an expert witness in front of the Taos County Board of Commissioners regarding a shift to land use regulations which would basically waive some permit requirements for telecom companies to make, to have access to the towers there for changes. There was a lot of technical stuff, but at bottom, it was opening a door to the rollout of 5G in one of the most beautiful areas in the country, and an area that thrives, that basically survives on its tourist revenue. Because the land of enchantment, which is, you know, the state kind of brand of New Mexico, is nowhere more enchanting than Taos. It's got an amazing tribal heritage. The Pueblo community there is the longest continually occupied cultural lineage settlement in the United States, probably in the North American continent. It's 1,500 years that village of the Pueblo tribe has been continuously occupied. Of course, it's got an amazing artistic heritage, and, you know, Georgia O'Keeffe and many other prominent artists. And it's just one of the most beautiful places around, and it's about getting away from it all. And it's not about having lethal small cell towers densified, you know, every other block, and people are waking up to the truth about 5G. So, there's an amazing group of activists there. Well, simply, you know, these are not professional activists, these are just concerned citizens, particularly Reese Chula and Jeannie Lottz, Falcon Britt, who were our guests here on Radio 5G just a couple of weeks ago. And they sparked an awareness and a concern and a movement in Taos just over the course of a couple of months. They founded the Taos Alliance for Public Health and Safety. They manned tables at supermarkets in front of the major telecom retail stores, Verizon, ATT, Sprint, et cetera. And they got nearly 1,000 signatures asking, requesting a moratorium on the rollout of 5G in Taos. And it just so happened that the director of their planning and zoning department of Taos County saw that there was a conflict in some of the technical language about the application process for telecom companies coming in and putting additional this or additional that, and it was all very technical. But it opened up the opportunity for a public hearing. And so, that's what we alerted everybody to. And the night before the hearing, a public information event was held at the Masonic Hall in Taos, and I was the speaker there. We had a great turnout, nearly 100 people. And people were asking very intelligent questions, and people were very concerned, as you can imagine, if, you know, you're among our listeners who have already educated yourselves and done your own research about what's happening with the rollout of 5G across the planet. So, we were pretty excited about our chances of getting a good turnout for the hearing itself. You know, and that's a big deal, you've got these county commissioners, and they're hearing the side of the story from the big telecom companies, particularly Kit Carson Electric, the local company that would be working with the rollout. And they needed to hear from the citizens, and we knew that if we could get a really good turnout of concerned citizens, asking intelligent questions, of expert witnesses providing solid information and evidence, that there's something about having a roomful of really ticked off citizens that tends to impress politicians. Excuse me. So, in that event, we succeeded beyond our wildest expectations. There were at least 300 people who showed up with signs and placards, and we actually had an hour-long delay once the session had actually started at 9:00 AM, because the fire marshal had to come in and say, "Folks, you need to clear the path, you need to, you know, clear the aisles, clear the rows, provide, you know, the access to exit routes," that the fire marshal is there to make sure we're all safe. And so, it was, it was a very intense session. And just to give you an overview of it, what we're going to do at Radio 5G is put together a video, edit together a video, of the public testimony, because it was so moving, and so informative, and so substantial. You had, you know, old people, teenagers, technical experts, Dr. Sharon Goldberg, whose YouTube testifying before the Michigan Legislature has been very widely viewed regarding the unassailable evidence regarding the biological effects of EMF and Wi-Fi. She was there in person to testify. And so, we're going to share with you in a few days, a video, because this is actually, you know, this is public testimony, this was videotaped and will be posted on the county's YouTube channel. And it's devastating. It's especially when it comes down to the result, which was that in spite of all 300 people showing up, in spite of expert testimony, in spite of moving testimony from, you know, citizens from every walk of life and generation, the commissioners voted four to two to leave, to approve the changes proposed by the planning and zoning department. And when we put that video edit together, we're also going to include, you're going to see the planning and zoning director state up front. Now imagine this, you've got, you've got a big public room full of 300 people with placards and signs, and, you know, this very methodical, pleasant, but really kind of boring technical guy gets up and says, "So, you know, here in section 1A35Z zone of the regulations B42-n, we propose certain changes, blah de blah, and oh, by the way, this has nothing to do with the rollout of 5G. This is simply about reconciling conflicting language in our land use regulations which would allow this or that." And so, this guy is saying this under oath. He is sworn, and the usual, raise your right hand and swear to tell the truth, the whole truth. And as this, so basically, he's there saying that all these people and all these placards and all this protest and this 1,000 signatures is basically really kind of not appropriate, and, you know, "We love all you citizens and everything, but, you know, I don't know who sent you in here about 5G today, but that's not really what we're doing, we're just trying to reconcile some language in our land use regs."
Well, can I interrupt here for a second? Because that was exactly what happened to Mark Steele, that when he went before the city commissioner, county, Gateshead Commission, whatever it was called, when he went before them, they told him there was no 5G. That was where they, they said the same thing. And he's saying, "My God, I've got pictures of it, I've got, you know, and no, 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 there's no 5G."
Right.
So, you know, that, they're using the same tactic. "Oh, no, you stupid people, there's no 5G there."
Exactly. Now, the great thing about this, there were some very smart people in that room, and one of them, a young lady named Natalina, halfway through this session, she came running out to us, and she had gone and accessed the county's YouTube channel of the original hearing on March 19th, at which this same guy brought up the problem that we were addressing yesterday, brought up what was causing the need to reconcile this stuff. So, under sworn testimony in March 19th, here's what this guy said, and I've got a quote, "What the planning committee has been experiencing is an influx of cell tower carriers who have been addressing our regulations, wanting to approve existing telecommunication infrastructure. The reason they are wanting to improve is the push to fifth generation." Flat out, the reason for this is the push to fifth generation, that's 5G.
So, he's perjured himself?
He's perjured himself in public testimony, available on YouTube, and then he goes in yesterday, sworn under oath, and says, "This has nothing to do with 5G," and he said it three times, even after we pointed out the discrepancy.
Who is this guy? What's his, what's his position?
Okay, he is the director of the planning and zoning department of the, of Taos County.
So, he's not one of the county commissioners?
No, no, he's not one of the commissioners, he's an employee.
Oh, well, we'll have to get his face up here, won't we?
Uh, yeah, we will, unfortunately. I mean, you know, the guy, how he just, you know, could have so blatantly publicly perjured himself is kind of beyond me, but it's, you know, it's just open and shut, it's right up there on YouTube for everybody to see.
And you did, and what?
This is about the push to fifth generation, and then he says, you know, two months later, "This has nothing to do with fifth generation."
But you got that, you got that, you told him, "Well, wait a minute, we've got you on camera telling, saying it was 5G," and he just blew you off?
Uh, yeah, basically, the commissioners rushed to his defense, "No, Ed is such a good guy, and he does such great work for us, and we really uphold him." Well, he perjured himself, and he's trying to defuse this whole thing, deflate the, you know, the concern and the momentum of 1,000 signatures, which is, that's a voting block in Taos County, you people better pay attention, that's a significant voting block, and 300 people showing up really ticked off, and lying through his teeth that this has nothing to do with 5G. So, yeah, I mean, it's like in Gateshead, this is what we're dealing with. Now, ultimately, you know, so we sat there, and, you know, I mean, good Lord, an hour and a half of boring technical testimony from this same guy while people are waiting to testify, you know, eating up all their time. God help us if we go, however, you know, 30 seconds over the three-minute limit, they opposed, it's supposed to be five, but they said, "Well, you know, we've got so many people at the three-minute limit." And, you know, and people were getting ticked off, and, you know, spontaneously calling things out, and one of the commissioners says, "If you people can't obey the rules, this session will end." Well, it doesn't matter if the other guy rattles on for an hour and a half and purges himself, that's okay. But, you know, God forbid some of these concerned citizens should find the whole thing a bit objectionable. But I understand, you know, you've got to have the rules, you've got to observe order, but to threaten to close the session, man, you're making a big mistake if you want to stay on the commission, because there is an election coming up, you know, and you've just ticked off 1,000 people in a county where that's 10% of the voting population. So, so the upshot of it was, at the end, those of us who stuck it out to the very end, you know, got to actually see the vote, see the call.
How long, how long, how long did that take?
Uh, that was about another hour, from like, they took a bathroom break at around 12 or so, and it took an hour, and this is the commissioners, you know, talking back and forth and discussing. And they go to their lawyer, who's sitting there, says, "Well, the FCC says..." And we pointed out that the FCC is being challenged in, you know, multiple lawsuits across the country, that we pointed out, this is a 10th Amendment issue. We pointed out also that Larimer County in Colorado has come up with a whole raft of regulations that you can implement within your county authority without going into direct conflict at the FCC, that can stall or maybe even prevent the rollout of 5G. All right, so, we put all this on the table, all we were asking of these people was, delay the approval of this waiver of a permit process, and please just look at some new regulations that Larimer County is already doing, that could, within your authority, without defying the FCC, allow you to stop the rollout of a dangerous technology, which 26,000 scientists and doctors across the world, including the Prime Minister of Poland, the City of Rome, the City of Brussels, you know, Switzerland, 200 American cities are saying, "Don't." So, all you got to do is have a little delay, go back to the table, and add some regulations that we, another county in Colorado is already looking at. Real easy for them to do.
Okay, so there is, the county you're referencing is a Colorado county, it's not a New Mexico county.
Right, Larimer County's a Colorado county, they've got, they've got, you know, a whole menu of stuff they're looking at, which we shared, you know, we entered into the record yesterday. So, in Taos County, New Mexico, you know, we were just saying, you can, just all we're asking is that you honor the concern of all these citizens and the testimony of all these experts, that you are opening a backdoor to 5G. Whether or not your planning and zoning director is perjuring himself about the matter, the truth is, that's what this is about, so just please hold off, because this is possibly lethal to the people of Taos. Just hold off and look at some other options, and don't just rush this in. Well, it comes to it, and at the end, you know, the guy we were actually hoping was a swing vote, who might turn our way based on the aesthetics, like, don't ruin with, you know, densification small cell towers, one of the most beautiful cities in the Southwest, he turned out to be, I'm searching for polite language for the radio, but he pretty much just...
Now, which man was this?
Um, I don't have his name in front of me, Tom Blankenhorn, I think his name was.
All right, I've got, I've got Nathaniel Evans, Darian Fernandez, Pasqualito Mestes, and George Fritz-Hahn.
Okay, you might be looking at the city council rather than the Taos County Commissioners.
Ah, so I've got the wrong pictures up.
Yeah.
I wished you'd seen this last night. So, this is the city commission, the city council?
County, county, the county. It's the Taos County Commissioners.
Oh, this is the town council.
Yeah.
So, it was a county, it was at the county level that this was being done?
Yeah, it was Tom Blankenhorn, Jim Fabro, Mark Callegos, Gabriel Romero, and Denise O'Connell. So, you know, the people who, who voted with us, hang on just a second here, got a very minute, about us, da-da-da, commission, and Candace O'Donnell. Candace O'Donnell, and I believe it was Gabriel Romero, Gabriel Romero, who voted with us. So, you know, it was, of course, it was deflating, we kind of thought there was a chance that Tom Blankenhorn would vote with us, but he turned out to be the most adamantly opposed, you know, deciding, "Well, the World Health Organization says, American Cancer Institute says, that there's no harm from, you know, EMF and Wi-Fi, no cancer causing blah de blah."
Well, that's BS, they have said that it's cancer causing.
Yeah, well, yeah, well, Mr. Blankenhorn was probably not doing his due diligence and simply looking at what the telecom companies gave him to refute any concern about 5G without actually doing his own research.
Okay, let me, let me just, let me just jump in here, because this, this particular, apparently what they, where the level that the category that they put it in, okay, says that it could be a cancer, cancer causing. So, we read it as, it could be, well, you're fudging the numbers anyway, it is. And they're looking at it, the opposition, as, "Well, they didn't say it was cancer causing, they said, 'It's probably cancer causing.'"
Right, exactly.
See what I'm saying?
Exactly, in fact, we, you know, one of our experts testified, and I think it might have been Dr. Goldberg, testified, "The World Health Organization has classed, you know, EMF and Wi-Fi as a Class B carcinogen." Period, paragraph. So, you know, to go with, what do they call it, creative truth-telling, which is lying, essentially, you know, is picking the language, you know, has, you know, the World Health Organization has not stated that there, that it is definitely a carcinogen. Well, no, they've said it probably, isn't it a Class B carcinogen according to their own categories? So, you know, we quickly saw, and he was pretty contemptuous, this guy, in dismissing, you know, the testimony of, of all of the citizens. And there was some really moving testimony, very, you know, and it's not just the experts who were providing the solid evidence, there was some very moving testimony from, from young people, old people, we had one beautiful woman from the Pueblo tribe who expressed her concern and reminded the commissioners that life is sacred, all life is sacred, the lives of your children and our children, and the animals and the plants and the bees are sacred, and you need to give due honor and care and diligence in not even possibly endangering sacred life. Well, you know, that didn't cut any mustard with Mr. Blankenhorn. So, so in the aftermath, excuse me, you know, we were, of course, you're going to be a little deflated, but on the other hand, you know, had we gotten this comparatively small victory, you know, the, all the concerned citizens, the 1,000 signatures, the 300 people might have, who showed up, and I've said, "Oh, yay, great, we stopped 5G in Taos." Well, no, you didn't. So, instead, we're galvanized even more by this, and we had a sort of post-game debriefing luncheon among the core team behind the Taos Public Alliance, Taos Alliance for Public Health and Safety. And that included Dr. Goldberg, Sharon Goldberg joined us, and, you know, and Reese Chula, and Jeannie Lottz, and Falcon Britt, and, and Dan Lottz, Jeannie's husband, who's former Federal Aviation Administration official, so he knows that whole deal, he's an FAA guy, and he's seen, you know, how this kind of thing can roll from federal jurisdiction down to local. And what emerged at that meeting was, you know, a forward momentum to take this really cohesive group, I mean, I am really honored to have been a part of this group. Now, I live up in Colorado, but it's a two-hour drive, and this was, you know, there was a real absence of ego in this group. You know, you get, you get 18, 20 people together, you know, in a cause, and inevitably, human nature being what it is, somebody wants a little more limelight, or a little more leadership, or a little more credit, and there was almost none of that that I could see in this group. Well, Dr. Goldberg stood up, and this is Sharon Goldberg, whom many of you may have seen her widely viewed YouTube video of her testimony in front of the Michigan Legislature. And she's a New Mexico resident, and she is also on the faculty, the medical school at the University of New Mexico. And she let us know, and I don't want to get into too much detail here, because, you know, this could be a matter for some discretion in terms of her moving forward with this, but essentially, there is an opportunity at the state level in New Mexico, with the new Republican woman governor there, to actually create, and this goes to stuff that you've talked about a lot, Nancy, there's an option, folks, fiber optic, it's in place, you don't, I mean, yes, we'll need wireless here and there, it's not going away, but 5G and the densification of 4G, the opportunity at the state level, through influence with the governor, to make New Mexico a model of legislation and, and forward move, moving, forward thinking about making it the model of safe wired technology, safe schools, safe hospitals, free of, of 5G wireless, because if people are, you know, getting sick and dropping like flies, and, you know, the bee colonies are collapsing right and left around the country, and New Mexico steps forward as a model of how to have really safe, effective technology, this isn't putting your kids' education back, it's keeping them out of cancer wards while they're learning their, you know, reading, writing, arithmetic. So, essentially, what Dr. Goldberg shared with us is that there's an opportunity for a well-organized grassroots group to step forward and help craft legislation, and having, possibly having the governor's ear.
Can you, can you explain why fiber optics is the obvious solution?
Well, we heard a lot of testimony about this yesterday. Timothy Shagel, PhD, was there, expert consultant in, you know, international consultant in wired and wireless, and he patiently explained why, you know, fiber optic, and particularly in Taos County, they got the questionable guy at Kit Carson Electric, who received $47 million in federal money to roll out not 5G, but fiber optic. And most of his customer base has not been serviced with the fiber optic that was laid out, and instead, suddenly, he's buying smart meters, right and left, and people's electricity bills are going up, and guys who used to check meters have lost their jobs, and people are getting twaxed, you know, which is the pulse they send through your house with smart meters. We had women there, you know, a professional therapist with a thriving practice, who, when this stuff went in, was unable to sleep, massive symptoms, unable to do her work, and, you know, ended up, you're just trying to find one place after another that just might be free of Wi-Fi, you know, and this is a successful woman in mid-career, ends up living in her car, two such women, you know, and these aren't, you know, quote-unquote "street people," these are highly skilled, mature, successful professionals, who, when they started to turn this stuff on, you know, electro-sensitivity as a syndrome is, you know, is an epidemic now. And so, you know, this is the kind of thing that's happening in Taos, but meanwhile, this, you know, $47 million, mysteriously enough, doesn't actually end up implementing fiber optics, and suddenly, there's smart meters rolling out everywhere, try to opt out, and say, "Oh, yes, opt out is an option." You know, two years later, you're still negotiating while you're getting twaxed every night, and having to give up your job and live in a car. I mean, that's really, you know, this testimony was provided to these people, and apparently it wasn't enough to, to get them to just wait a little bit on this land use regulation change that allows a backdoor to 5G, by their own testimony.
Do you have any idea why? I mean, it's like insanity versus humanity.
Yeah, well, it is, I mean, what can you say? You know, the two people who voted to, to delay, you know, were, you know, okay, I'm on their side of the issue, obviously, but they were responsive to human concerns. And there was a swing vote guy, I want to be respectful to him, that would be Jim Fabro, who was very concerned, you know, he was asking some probing questions, and he was clearly troubled about the implications. he was clearly troubled about the implications. But at the end of the day, he was going like, hey, you know, the planning department has given us some clear language to reconcile a conflict in our permit process, and, you know, we've been here all day, let's just vote and do this thing. One of our people talked to him.
So it was, it was, it was kick the ball down, down the street?
Yeah, yeah, kick the ball down the street, and, you know, you've raised these concerns, and we'll address them in future regulations, thank you very much. They could have simply, and the guy from planning, the guy who perjured himself, said, yeah, we could go back to the drawing board, we could come back in three months with some language that would address these concerns, we could add additional regulations, and I'd be happy to do that. You know, he was just doing his job. I didn't get the impression that the guy was, you know, a compromised, bribed, corrupt public official who perjured himself, I kind of got the idea that he just forgot and moved to a different perspective, got some pressure, and just said kind of what was expected, and he perjured himself, bottom line, dude, you perjured yourself, it's open and shut. This has nothing to do with 5G, and three months later, he brings the whole thing up, three months earlier, he brought the whole thing up specifically because he said, this is in response to the push for 5G. So, but he had said, yeah, we can, you know, no problem, we can come back to you with, you know, with some improved language in three months to six months. But they said, nah, nah, you know, never mind the thousand signatures, never mind the 300 people showing up, never mind the risk of cancer and tumors and, and miscarriages and all the rest of it through 5G coming in the backdoor, we just don't want to be bothered, you know? That's basically what it was. Oh, come on, we've been here all day, let's vote on this. That, that's like a quote. So, it's disturbing, but, you know, the upshot of it is that you've got a really galvanized core group behind the Taos Alliance for Public Health and Safety, you've got, you know, a thousand people who are going to be really ticked off, you've got everybody in that room who heard really moving testimony, I mean, there were cheers and shouts and whistles after some of the testimony, and, and we're going to share with you, you know, an edited video of this. And so, you know, the galvanization, the forward movement of this, and, you know, I had a, in my testimony, because it was limited to three minutes, I didn't get to everything I wanted to say, but one of the things I, I said to them was, look, you need, I respectfully suggested to the commissioners that you realize that this vote will be remembered. If 5G comes in the backdoor you're opening here in Taos, and we see the health effects that we've seen elsewhere, if children are getting sick, and, you know, the environment is being ruined, and people are dying, this vote will be remembered. I said, if on the other hand, you act with simple prudence and go back to the drawing board and put in some, some regulations that don't mean you have to go sue the FCC, but simply slow down the process so you can ensure the safety of the people of Taos, that vote will be remembered with gratitude. So, they chose the first option, because, believe me, this vote is going to be remembered, and, you know, if they roll it out in Taos, people, people are going to be coming up to them for years, you know, and saying, oh, my kid's got cancer, thanks a lot, you know, my, my wife, Miss Carrie, thanks a lot. And that, that's what this is at, and the fact that they weren't willing to just slow down and say, okay, let's just look at this again, and, you know, give us some, some new language, and we'll look at these regulations they're using in Larimer County.
Okay, just, just let, just let me make a statement here, to me, what we're dealing with is people that are basically cowards, because they could have made the stand right then and there. Now, my, my other question is, do, do the people of New Mexico realize that this 5G system that they want to put in is going to cause all the trees to die? Now, people say, well, the 5G is blocking the, the signals, that's, they are, they are, they are pulling in the signals, therefore technically blocking, but it won't take long before the tree dies. That's why in, in, in Great Britain, they're going in and they're cutting, you know, tens of thousands of trees down, tens of thousands, and it was done without any of the, you know, local people knowing about it, all of a sudden, the trees started coming down. Now, you've got areas where they didn't take them down, and the trees are all dying, the bark just starts peeling off of them. So, the question here is, how in the hell do they think in New Mexico, I mean, there's a lot of, of trees in New Mexico, isn't there?
Uh, yeah, well, I mean, a lot of it's desert, a lot of it's scrub, but, yeah, there are living trees, I mean, there's a lot of beautiful forests on those mountains.
I mean, to make this work, they're going to have to kill the trees.
Well, you know, one of the things they're pointing out is, hey, folks, you know, this is going into the big cities, they're not going to roll this out in the rural areas just yet, and it doesn't really make financial sense for them to roll it out in a community like Taos where there's not enough paying customers to, well, ordinarily, that would be true, however, we are seeing that this is a global push, we're talking 20,000 low-orbit satellites interacting with the stuff on the ground, you know, we're, we're talking, okay, there's supposedly competing geopolitical factions, Russia, China, the US, you know, but the reality is that, you know, if you look at what's going on in, in Gateshead, the LED street lamps, which have little 5G things on top of them, oh, we're just replacing your street lamps while zapping you and your children with 5G, those same LED street lamps have gone up in Taos. This is a covert rollout, this, you know, and the guys who are putting them up, I'm sure they don't, they just think they're putting up street lamps, you know, but that's exactly what Mark Steel pointed out in Gateshead, and he pointed out, you know, the biosphere death that took place all around these things. And, you know, it's difficult to communicate this to people without opening the door, you know, looking down the rabbit hole just a little bit and saying, oh, by the way, folks, you may need to consider the possibility that this is being imposed from the top unilaterally by a certain faction that is really worried about completely losing control of the battle for freedom, that is really threatened right now by the good guys, by an alliance that is actually on the verge of taking them down, and that imposing an electronic grid of surveillance and control and weaponization across the planet and mind control, political behavior control, and that's all documented stuff, this is not fantasy, that that is their endgame, this is their big push, and they're rolling over everything, you know, the cantons in Switzerland say, no, we don't want it, they roll that out anyway. You know, the citizens of Taos go, oh, it's not coming in for, you know, years, these guys actually said, oh, no, five to 10 years, we said, no, your own people are saying months. And, oh, by the way, what are those strange little devices on top of the LED street lamps, and why are people not able to sleep at night? You know, that, there is this reality, and if it comes to civil disobedience, well, you know, if you look at the history of civil rights movements, that's what ultimately wakes people up. So, no, the people of New Mexico don't know that their, their environment's going to be devastated, but yesterday's events are going to go a long way towards waking up the people of New Mexico, because what they've done is galvanized a really ticked-off group of high-integrity, high-skilled people who have already created, you know, a really formidable movement in just a three-month period in Taos, New Mexico, and who now, you know, potentially may have influence at the state level. And if New Mexico succeeds in becoming a model of forward-thinking, safe-wired technology, you know, that model could roll out across the country, too. So, yesterday's, you know, events in Taos in front of the county commissioners could end up, who knows, we'll see, you know, having effects across the country and maybe the world.
Now, one of the things, one of the things you didn't really cover, because I think it's important for people to be able to explain why fiber optics is an obvious solution, do you know enough of the science to explain it?
My understanding, and again, I'm not a technical expert on this, we had several technical experts testify about this, well, you take, for example, smart meters, now, it is perfectly possible to get the same readings using fiber optic technology without the need to blast people's homes with radio waves, and particularly in Taos, supposedly, you know, the fiber optic has already been installed. And, you know, what Timothy Shackle pointed out, the PhD, international consultant in wireless and wired technology, to the commission yesterday, he said that, what, what people don't realize is that 5G is not about improved cellphone coverage, you're not going to be able to hear your friends more clearly or not have your signal drop because they've rolled out 5G. 5G is about data, that is its primary function, so it's a toxic layer cake, 4G is still there, and they put 5G on top of it, so you're just, you know, you're not replacing 3G and 4G, they're going to layer it on top of you. You want to still get, you know, decent vocal reception, well, they're happy to, you know, turn up the 4G bombardment of Wi-Fi and EMF, you know, to help you with that, but in the meantime, they're also going to be laying 5G millimeter wave, you know, microwave radiation on top of that. So, with fiber optic, all that goes away, and you can read your meters, and you can get, you know, one gigabyte a second, I believe, was what he said, data transfer, so they can't tell us it's not about safety, they can't tell us it's not about speed, it's got better speed, it's got perfect safety, and you can get your meter readers, you know, if you, if you want to, if you want to deprive your already high unemployment county of even more jobs by laying off the guys who used to come around and read your, your meter, okay, fine, if you want to do that, you can still get your automatic readings from fiber optic for your electric meters. And, you know, he also pointed out, it's, you know, we're perfectly capable of doing this kind of thing in this country, in the 1930s, you know, we electrified the whole country in a matter of just a few years, you know, want to talk the Manhattan Project in World War II about building the atomic bomb, you know, the decision and the political will to marshal the resources, we can, you know, we can do pretty much anything in this country. Oh, and you're rolling out $20 trillion across the planet to implement a surveillance, control and weapons system, you know, with a huge wave of propaganda, I mean, this guy, Tom Blankenhorn, in his final thing was saying, well, you know, the thing is, 5G has educational benefits, 5G has health benefits, he actually said that, I swear, I had to pick my jaw up off the floor, health benefits of 5G, well, that's telecom propaganda, just talking about how in the hospitals down the road, we will be able to, you know, wonderfully increase the technological capability to do this, yeah, because your cancer wards are going to be filling up with people blasted by 5G, so, yeah, there'll be plenty of opportunity for, you know, extremely high-cost conventional medicine to help you, you know, help you have a, a more prolonged death process. Anyway, so, I, I don't know if that's enough technical detail.
Well, the basic thing is, is that the fiber optics in the location that we're talking about, excuse me, has already been paid for, supposedly has already been put in, and still, they want to pursue with this death march with 5G that they claim is not involved in this, whereas the guy that's in charge of it three months ago said, yes, this will help 5G come in faster. I mean, this is the epitome, well, not, not, well, yes, it is, I mean, it's gotten so stupid that it's like really insane.
Yeah, there's pretty much nothing else to say about it, you know? And, you know, I ended up being encouraged by the, the upshot after the, the meeting, you know, after the, the post-game debriefing with our group and Dr. Goldberg's offer to possibly have the Taos Alliance for Public Health and Safety, you know, expand and rebrand as a statewide grassroots group to help make New Mexico a model of safe technology, of safe-wired technology, and that's, you know, that's very encouraging, and that, this is for immediate implementation, this isn't like, oh, yes, we'll try to get a meeting with the governor and down the road, who knows, no, this is already in process at the state level, and they're specifically looking for a well-organized grassroots group. So, you know, that's, that's where it's at, and that could happen fairly quickly, and I love that this is a Republican woman governor in New Mexico who is open to, to this kind of initiative, you know, that's.
Now, you know, is she behind it, is she saying to people, give me an excuse to, to help you?
Um, yeah, Michelle Grisham is her name, and our understanding, I mean, I'm not going to quote the governor here, but Dr. Goldberg was, was part of a, a small group of experts who were brought in specifically to talk to the governor's staff, you know, regarding health and science initiatives about this program. So, you know, she is apparently very, you know, forward-thinking about this issue, excuse me, so, yeah, that's.
It's, it's, it seems like what we have happening, because something else came up about this, what was it, YouTube, and a man went before some commission, and he basically said, look, before we go any further down this rabbit hole, why don't we convene a citizens committee to look at it all? And if I'm hearing you right, it's sort of the same thing, the governor's saying, look at, I know there might be a problem here, but you guys got to get yourselves organized enough so that I can sell it to everybody else, therefore, I'm throwing it back onto the citizens to do this.
Right, excuse me, right, yeah, that, that sounds like what's happening here, you know, there has to be, even though she might, you know, believe in it and, and be up for it herself, you know, it, it does take informed pressure, and if you say, okay, there's a citizens group here, there are experts, technical experts, medical experts, concerned citizens, you know, petitions in the many thousands, so that allows her to, you know, bring this to the legislature, and as you say, sell it.
Well, this is delightful, this is delightful, because it's forcing the people, per the Tenth Amendment, to take charge.
Right.
I mean, we could, we could look at this as a defeat, but in fact, it's not, because they demonstrated through perjury, unfortunately, the individual, I feel for the individual, I feel for all these people, because they're cowards. They, they will not take a stand for something that is so cut and dry, there is no debate here, there has not been a debate since it started, because they, they keep going back to, well, it's not been called a cancer by the, well, it has been, it's just, you're trying to talk legalese, you know, it's like, it's such an insane situation, and all they have to do is stand up and say, I don't want to be insane here, you know, but they get suckered down into it because they're basically cowards, and I'm not putting cowards down, cowards are sometimes very smart people, I'm getting the hell out of here, you know, I'm not putting coward down, but it's cowardly when you will not take a stand for humanity, period, in my estimation, that's the definition of coward.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, it's.
So what we got, but what we got happening is that the people that are, you know, like a governor, a governor needs an excuse, the people have to be, I'm loving this, because it's forcing people, individuals, like our three ladies from Taos, to come together to just talk to their neighbors, I've had the same situation here, I've told the story, it was over a zoning thing, this is over life and death, and, but it's the same thing, if you take the time to go to your neighbors, your neighbors respond, this is very much a grassroots situation that's actually being forced upon us by the politicians who know that they need the upswelling of, you know, the, the citizens to make everybody else turn around, it's fascinating.
Yeah, yeah, it really is, and it goes back to the question of the story, you know, that the story that wakes everybody up, which is why, you know, perversely, as deadly as 5G is, you know, the hidden blessing is that it, it's waking people up to the whole, the whole picture, you know, because once you wake up to the reality of 5G, and you do some research, and you get the picture of what's really going on, and who's really pushing it, and why, that's going to wake up, you know, a whole big percentage. going to wake up, you know, a whole big percentage of the population to what's really going on with lots of other things, with false flags, you know, with geoengineering, you know, with the elite pedophile network, all those things that a lot of folks just don't want to know about. When it comes to, you know, your kid's got cancer and your house value is going down because they installed that cell tower behind your house, oh, and by the way, here's what that's about, well, you've just woken up millions of people who would not otherwise have, you know, who might have just kept on sleepwalking, but not anymore. Yeah, that's, that's the value of the story.
I call it a godsend, because so many of us have been screaming for so long, and no, we were all crazy, we didn't know what we were talking about, didn't matter how many certificates of authenticity you had, you were a nutcase because you're going up against the massive, it's wonderful, we're going to have all the thing, the internet of things. Honey, you know, you go into the internet of things, what do you think you've just become? You've become a thing.
Mm-hmm.
You know, the humanity, the question of...
An enslaved thing, oh, by the way.
Yeah, the question of humanity is where we're at.
Yep.
You know, it's just phenomenal to see people who just don't want to deal with it. So they push it down, they kick it down the street. Well, guess what?
Yeah, and there's going to be people like that, you know.
I think most of them, I think this may be a main problem, is that they're just cowards.
Well, you look at, you know, we've quoted it a couple of times already, the Margaret Mead quote about, never doubt that a small group of thoughtful and committed citizens can change the world. Indeed, it's the only thing that ever has. And we don't need, you know, what are you going to call it, 50, 60, 70% of the folks who are just going to sleepwalk? If we've got even 10%, you know, we've got, suppose we have a really awakened 2% to 3% who have helped marshal the resources of a, out of a 10 to 15%, and they're putting pressure at state levels, county levels, across the country, that's enough, you know? It might even be smaller than that, that is enough to seize the lever of change. And then, before you know it, everybody else is like, oh, yeah, yeah, they did that 5G thing, that was cool. That's the new thing where they stopped 5G and we've got this now, now I've got an option of wired and it's safer. Well, you know, so then they continue to sleepwalk with whatever the new situation is. But in the meantime, you know, the people who decided to make a difference made a difference.
Well, let's look at it from the standpoint, and I brought this up before, the Tea Party. Okay, now, those were just a few groups of people who came together because they essentially knew there was something wrong. They weren't, they didn't have a platform of how to fix it because they really weren't too sure of what was wrong. But that group of people morphed so fast that within two years of it even starting, they were a major influence in a presidential election.
Yep.
Okay, now, it got deflated because they went, oh, my God, we got to infiltrate this and kill it. That's what they did to it. But you've got the same, the same kindling there. The fire is already set to be lit, and 5G was the match, in my opinion. Because it's just like you're saying, all of a sudden, this little group in a little place in New Mexico is going to have a state presence because they organized themselves well, they knew the information, they got certified people to stand up with them. I mean, it was, I figured this was a slam dunk. They had the perfect scenario for victory. Okay? But I wasn't counting on the fact that, you know, we've got cowards involved. And again, I'm not putting cowards down. I'm just saying that, you know, some people have that, I'm going to, I'm going to fight thing, and some people say, I just want to, I just want to live my life. That's fine, but please, please do not become a government official. Get out of the way. Just go home. Sign, resign, resign. There's people there that really have a lot of courage in their heart, that would be glad to take over your position. So if you're a coward at heart, realize it, be your authentic self, and go home to your family. Let the rest of us take it over for you, okay? We don't want to get you all upset. Just go home, please.
Yeah, it's reminding me of President Kennedy's book, Profiles in Courage, which I think Arthur Schlesinger may have co-written with him, I don't recall, but that book was chapters describing politicians who had the guts to take unpopular stands in the name of their integrity and the name of the truth. I think one was, I want to say John Peter Altheld, governor of Illinois, in the wake of the Haymarket riots, and, oh, it's all the anarchists, and they found some guy and they were going to string him up. And Altheld saw that it was a false conviction, that the guy was innocent, that he'd been framed and he was just going to be the sacrificial goat, you know, in order to demonize the anarchists. And Governor Altheld actually said, well, I'm going to pardon the guy, I'm going to give him a reprieve, whatever, you know, he was about to be hanged, and they, and so he lost his career. He was voted out of office. They demonized him because he refused to have a man killed in order to satisfy, you know, mob vengeance and to demonize a political, you know, movement that's really easy to demonize, it's the anarchists. And, you know, it's moments like that, it's politicians like that. And we're not talking, you know, a governor of Illinois pardoning an anarchist here, we're talking about a little delay to rewrite some land use regulations around applications for cellphone towers. This is not, you know, Mahatma Gandhi on the Salt March to free India. We're just talking a teensy weensy little display of public service integrity, and they couldn't muster it. And that's a sad comment. So, you know, what do you say?
We say, we march on. I mean, you know, it's like 5G forced people to wake up. So now you've got people woke up, and because there are cowardly people not making easy decisions at the local level, it's an easy decision, the people want it this way, we're just going to take a little breather here and figure it out, right? No big deal. But they don't want to do any of that. So you've got that kind of thing pushing these organized people higher now at the state level. Okay? And once they get to state level and they demonstrate, because they're going to do it, they're going to have more and more and more people coming to, it's, you know, it's like, now they're going to be the national image, and then pretty soon it'll be the world image. You know, I mean, it's like, it's like the path is set, and all we have to do is march. This is the story. It started as some, three people getting together and talking.
Yeah, exactly. And that power of story thing, you know, keeps coming back for me, you know, because I'm a storyteller at heart, you know, my background in the theater and with Shakespeare and Charles Dickens and all that, you know, the power of story, it's amazing to me how it gets underestimated, that people don't realize that it is actually the governing dynamic of so much of human behavior. Now, stop me if I already quoted this, Nancy, I know we're coming up on our hour break here, but millions of people watched the final episode of Game of Thrones. I know you're not, you were not a fan, you didn't follow it, but the pivotal scene in that, you know, Jon Snow ends up out of duty, having to kill the woman he loves because she's turned into a war crimes massacring tyrant. And so there's no queen of the seven kingdoms, and the, all the leading nobles are in this courtyard, and we have to choose a king or a queen, right? And Tyrion Lannister, you know, he's the dwarf, and he's one of the main characters, and he's this, you know, rascally charming, wise witty guy who ends up screwing up right and left, and they have to choose a king. And he says, you know, I've, I've been in prison the last few weeks, I've had a lot of time to think about our history and what moves us as people. What, what really moves and changes our world and history and people? You know, said, is it gold? Is it flags? Is it armies? Says, no, stories. Said, there is nothing more powerful than a great story. Nothing can stop it, no enemy can defeat it. And who has a better story? And then he turns to this crippled son of the great Ned Stark, who became a prophet, and that ends up being the new king. But that really went deep for me. You know, there is really nothing more powerful than a great story. And this is because it's a true one, because it's a powerful one, because it's a life and death one, and because it's about the greatest story of all, which is all of us coming together to work for peace and freedom and love in the face of evil. I'm sorry, folks, it's evil. It's conscious, deliberately chosen evil. And so I'm pretty inspired, and we're coming up on our hour break. Do you want to say anything before we break, Nancy?
No, I'm good. We're going to do Natalie Rise, Generations Will Rise.
I'm here, hello.
Okay.
Okay.
Started to panic.
That's all right. Welcome back, everybody, to Radio 5G, a joint project of Cosmic Reality Radio and the Sacred Academy of Geoenergetics. This is Michael Henry Dunn, back with Nancy Hopkins today. Yeah, it's funny, I was dashing to get back to the headset and the microphone here because it's one of the blessings of where I live, up here at 8,600 feet in Creston, Colorado. Open the door, let the fresh air in, and we're just about done with the song on the break, and along with the fresh air, in came a bird. And so suddenly, I'm about to hit the unmute button, and there's a bird flying, you know, two or three feet from my face, trying to get out, trying to get out of the room. Anyway, the good news is, folks, we freed the bird. The bird got back out.
That's, that's, that's an astounding symbolic message.
Isn't it, though?
Wow.
Yeah.
What kind of bird was it?
I couldn't quite tell, I'm not...
With wings, it was up with wings.
It had wings and it wasn't a bat. And it wasn't a really huge dragonfly. It was not a hummingbird. It had some white markings, and it was small and cute. And what happened was it tried to get out the other window, and I hate it when they bash themselves against your window, it just breaks your heart. Happily, this window was halfway open, there was a screen, and so I managed to push the screen out and the birdie flew to freedom, just like we're going to do, folks, right? That's, that's the job here.
I mean, I'm sitting, I'm sitting here stunned, because that, in so many ways, is such a mystical experience you just had and shared with us.
Yeah, isn't it? I love that kind of thing. And there are times when it's just so in your face that you really can't ignore, you know, like, that was a pretty interesting thing that just happened.
You know, I know you're going to put, you're going to do a video on, you know, what happened, but you said there were some very, can you give us the, just the feeling of the people, your experience? You're a storyteller. I really want to know what it felt like to be in that room yesterday.
Okay, well, we're talking, we're talking a pretty, you know, just imagine your standard courtroom, out of courtroom dramas, and there's a big, high podium for the lordly six commissioners sitting above us all in their, you know, their chairs of majesty. And, and you've got people lining all the walls, every seat is filled, there's posters and placards, posters listing all of the cities and states and counties and countries across the world who are either suing the FCC or calling for a halt to the rollout. You've got, you've got people who are already suffering from electromagnetic sensitivity and severe symptoms. You've got, you know, a representative from the pueblo tribe, you've got like an 84-year-old guy who's lived in TAOZ all his life, who describes what has happened to TAOZ as the cellphone towers have moved in. And you've got these six commissioners starting to get into place, and you can see them getting kind of nervous, because it's not your everyday public hearing that is jammed to the gills, that with protesters and placards and signs, and they were pretty much prepped by the local telecom guy from Kit Carson Electric. You know, this is just a bunch of hysterical ladies who have been listening to conspiracy theories, and it's really not anything we need to waste our time in, 5G is perfectly safe. And this is the guy who went on to say that there's already so much toxicity out there in the world, folks, you know, between the food and the air and what's a little more toxicity? And people who are worried about it are basically idiots. Now, this is a quote from a radio interview with Luis Reyes of Kit Carson Electric. And so that was what the commissioners were getting fed, that kind of line. And, you know, you can't help wonder if this guy is saying, okay, what's a little more toxicity? Oh, so you must be volunteering your grandchild to come down with cancer, because that's okay, a little more toxicity, what's the difference? You know? The mind kind of boggles. So you're seeing these commissioners start to get the picture that this is not going to be any breezy dismissal of a bunch of hysterical ladies, right? And especially when, and we had a, we had a strategy session ahead of the meeting, and we said, okay, let's get gender-specific here. Let's play the gender strategy game. Because we know we've got five men and one woman on the, on the county commissioners. Now, three, you know, this being New Mexico, three of those gentlemen are of Hispanic descent. And then we've got, you know, two Anglo men, and then Candace O'Donnell. And so we said, all right, just so they know, they're not going to be able to dismiss this from the get-go as a bunch of hysterical ladies. We had a former FAA official lead off, and this is a six-foot-tall, good-looking, white-haired white man, Daniel Lotz, really smart, sharp, competent, highly experienced, an articulate guy, with, by the way, a great stage presence and a deep voice. So, so if you're going to play the gender game, it's like, okay, we're leading off with three white-haired white guys. I was white-haired white guy number three. And, you know, the first one, former FAA official, and then me, and then Timothy Shackle, PhD, international consultant in wired and wireless telecommunications, who's written an authoritative report on the future of safe wired technology and fiber optic. So that was the lead-off, just to put to bed, you know, their notion that this was going to be an easy dismissal of some hysterical ladies, who had nothing better to do than, you know, create a movement in northern New Mexico.
Well, behind every man is an amazing woman.
Well, right there, who's the woman behind, you know, Dan Lotz? Well, Jeannie Lotz, his wife, who was one of the three remarkable women we profiled here on Radio 5G a couple of weeks ago. So, and then our next expert witness was Dr. Sharon Goldberg, of the faculty in the medical school at the University of New Mexico, who had testified in front of the Michigan Legislature, whose YouTube video of that testimony has been very widely viewed around the world at this point. And they gave her three minutes, they gave all of us three minutes, and, you know, with a court official on a timer who yells, time, right? When these highly qualified experts are sharing really important testimony on the lethal dangers of the 5G network that they're about to open a back door to. So, I mean, you could feel it in the room, even though we'd all sat through an hour and a half of boring technical testimony from the planning and commission director who purged himself, you know, they stuck around. The room was, was full and attentive and tense. And there were, you know, just cheers and shouts and excitement in the room, and, I mean, it still boggles my mind that these people managed to vote to not take a little more time to... little more time to look at the language of the land use regulations. It's still pretty mind-boggling, given what took place. And then, you know, started to come, come the citizens who come forward. And, you know, you get a little nervous, I mean, from my point of view, I'm sitting there in the front row, and a little worried that, you know, we are going to get some people who are so upset that they won't be articulate, that they won't be reasonable, that they'll quote some stuff which is going to sound really far out, you know, if they get into chemtrails, and they get into Morgellons disease, and they're getting, you know, all these things that commissioners roll their eyes, and people in the audience who haven't heard about it go, oh, gee, we're with a bunch of conspiracy theorists. That didn't happen. These were all eloquent, ordinary people, well-organized in their presentation, articulate, yes, impassioned, yes, you know, telling human stories, but also, you know, citing evidence. We had a gentleman named Brian Hammer, who is an attorney with, you know, a very qualified background on civil rights issues, who pleaded with these guys, with these people. He said, "Do not surrender your power to the FCC. Do not surrender your responsibility to care for this health and safety of the people of Taos to the FCC or to the telecom industry. You have authority, you have jurisdiction, you have the ability here to craft some useful regulations. Please do not surrender the authority that we have given you, that we, the citizens of Taos, have given you. Do not roll over and do this." So, you know, it was so impressive. It really was. And, I mean, there were some tense moments when, you know, people would shout things from the sidelines, and the one guy says, "If you can't keep order, we will stop this meeting." I mean, if he had tried to stop this meeting, man, then there wouldn't have been a riot, but it would have been ugly. You know? It would have been a huge PR mistake on the part of this guy. But anyway, you know, the rest of the commissioners--
Well, darn, too bad he didn't do it.
Well, then, you know, they would have been able to paint us all as a bunch of unruly radicals, instead of a group of concerned citizens.
Terrorists.
Yeah, well, you know, on one level, he's right. You know, there's rules of order, there's courtesy, you don't, you know, you wait your turn, you don't shout up from the sidelines, it's, you know, but people were impassioned, you know? So, and even before the public testimony began, we're all waiting through, you know, the boring technical testimony from the planning and zoning director, and the room just, you know, more and more people were coming in, and they had to stop the whole thing for 45 minutes, for the fire marshal to come in, to clear the aisles, and to set up, you know, a TV out in the lobby where there's too many people, okay, we want everybody to see what's going on, we're setting a TV up out in the lobby, and those of you who, you know, who are going to have to go sit out there, we want to make sure that you get to participate and see what's going on. So, that was a technical delay. So, basically, you know, the fact of more than 300 people showing up, you know, was just really unignorable. It was a major deal here. And, you know, you just keep coming back to the fact of, wow, and cowardice was stronger than the impact of the, you know, the expert testimony, the 300 people, the thousand signatures, the, you know, the testimony from the pueblo tribe, you know, from an international expert in wireless and wire technology, from an MD who, you know, presented overwhelming evidence of the toxicity of the EMF and Wi-Fi, you know, and the testimony from Natalina, who pulled the quote from the guy at the planning department, saying that the whole reason for this regulation language change was the push for 5G. And they, you know, they're just trying to make it seem like, well, we appreciate the concern of all you citizens, but you don't seem to understand this has nothing to do with 5G, except that we've got your own public testimony on your own public YouTube channel by your own planning director, that this is specifically about 5G.
Now, Michael, what was the county commissioners? What were they, did they talk to you? I mean, were they just sitting there letting that guy talk for them, and then hearing you, and then saying, no?
Oh, yeah, no, pretty much, you know, this, I mean, once the public testimony began, that just proceeded uninterrupted, largely uninterrupted. You know, the guy, I swear, this guy, Ed Davila, whatever his name is, you know, very methodical, very well-prepared, very technical guy, two big, huge ring binders, you know, that he'd flip open to, if you go to Tab N and Section B of Initiative 214C, three-letter N, you will see that. And every time he started to speak, I swear, the guy would go, "Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell." Is it great? That's a great opening. And then they'd ask him a question, and he'd say, "Commissioners, Chairman, Chairman O'Donnell, I would beg to present..." And it, literally, every time the guy opened his mouth, he checked back in to butt-kiss the authorities with, you know, psychophantic. I don't use that word very often, but this is a good opportunity for the use of the word psychophantic. Look it up, folks, it means slavish butt kissing to authority. You know, a good half hour, I would bet you, of the total morning's time, was taken up by the planning director and commissioner, starting off everything by saying, "Mr. Chairman and Chairman Commissioner, I do, you know, I hope it was..." It was, it got to be hilarious.
I'm laughing my ass off.
I mean, the guy was obviously very good at what he does, he's a very meticulous guy, you know, he was, but it was just over the top. He might as well have been a robot, a psychophantic robot slave. It was, it was, yeah. But he does a good job, he's the planning director, and the commissioners all love him. And they all leapt to his defense when it turned out he perjured himself, you know? They say, no, we need that, he does a great job.
Did they look like they were engaged in actually listening to what was being presented, or had they just kind of zoned out by the public?
Well, yeah, well, it's like that expression you put on your face in algebra class in freshman year of high school, where you lean, and believe me, I was good at this, you lean your chin on one hand, and you practice an expression of pure attentiveness, and you go to sleep. You just, you look like you're there. There were a couple of people who were doing that. There was one Hispanic gentleman over to the left of the commissioners, who never said a single word the entire time, the entire day. I mean, they could have put a mannequin in there and just had him text in his response, and that would have been fine. I mean, it was complete nonparticipation. And then there were, you know, some who were very engaged, and, you know, who were asking intelligent questions. The guy who we hoped would be a swing vote, Mr. Jim Fabenbro, you know, was clearly concerned, and he was asking, you know, probing intelligent questions. Ultimately, he voted against us, but he also touched base with some of our people afterwards and said, "Look, I'm very concerned about this going forward, let's keep in touch." So, you know, he was very engaged. Commissioner O'Donnell, Candace O'Donnell, or is it O'Connell? I'm sorry. But in any case, Candace was very actively engaged, and, you know, very reasonably saying, "Let's just take some time, let's go back to the drawing board. We have an opportunity to recraft this wording, to put in regulations that will, you know, land use regulations and the application process that will allow us to better safeguard the safety, not have a backdoor to the rollout of 5G." Very simple request, this is a mind-boggling thing here. We weren't asking them to take some stand, you know?
And the director, who would have had to initiate that, said, "Yeah, we can do that, we can go back to the drawing board."
Sure, yeah, you know.
So, there was a total out for these people?
Total, total easy out for these people. And, you know, what the backstory is of who has a relationship with Kit Carson Electric and who doesn't, and, you know, one wonders about stuff like that, but, you know, there's nothing on the face of it, conflict of interest, or, you know, ownership of stock or anything that we could, you know, bring forward. And, you know, maybe they're just lazy, maybe they're just cowardly, you know, whatever. So, that's how it rolled out, but, as I say, your vote will be remembered, folks. Believe me, your vote will be remembered. And Tom Blankenhorn, his term is up and term limits, he is not coming back on the commission. But your vote will be remembered, sir, that's for certain. God forbid, 5G gets rolled out in Taos and people get hurt and the town gets ruined. God forbid, you know? But we will see, we've got a shot here. And I feel great about it. You know, it was, by the time it was rolling down to the end, you know, the crowd started to thin out, you know, people have jobs to get back to, families to take care of, you know, this is 9:00 AM on a Tuesday, you know, so people were showing up. You know, they were taking time out of their lives, away from their families, away from their jobs. But I was particularly moved by the, you know, the young people who were there, late teens, early twenties, who were showing up. You know, you've got an attractive young woman with, you know, dreadlocks and a tattoo or two, and she gave such an eloquent, well-informed, impassioned testimony. And, yeah, it was really moving and inspiring to just see, this is the movement, this is the coalition, these are the people who are waking up, and it's representative of America, you know? All ages, we had the beautiful woman from the pueblo tribe, who spoke to the sanctity of life. "Please remember, all life is sacred, your lives, your children, the trees, the plants, the animals, protect life." You know, that, really, I look forward to what I hope we're going to be able to share with you of an edited video of this, because, you know, I've seen a fair amount of stuff out there in the Stop 5G movement of testimony, and, you know, Nancy and I are here on Radio 5G, talking to Mark Steele, you know, talking to Dean Henderson, talking to Sacha Stone, talking to Reese Jula, Jeannie Lottz, and Falcon Bit, all these wonderful people. This testimony in Taos yesterday is such a beautiful cross-section of eloquent, impassioned testimony from ordinary people, combined with solid expert testimony from certified experts, like Dr. Sharon Goldberg, like Timothy Shackle, PhD. And, you know, it's, this is the movement, these are the people, these are the kinds of people who, across the country and across the world, are standing up and realizing that this is the moment, you know, this affects us all, this is something you can't ignore. You know, I know, you know, a brave, eloquent woman up in Boulder, Colorado, who, you know, said, "Well, you know, Michael, I'm all about sacred activism training, I can't get into the whole 5G mess." Well, yes, you can, because guess what? Your grown kids who live in Denver are going to be subject to being irradiated on their block. And so, yeah, it does matter. And, you know, I'm not knocking her, she's an amazing person, but it's just so many of us are going, "Yeah, well, I've already got my, I've already got my gig, I've already got my Dharma, I've already got my cause, you know, good luck to you." Well, that's all well and good, I'm not asking people to abandon, you know, their focus, their cause, their mission, but you cannot ignore 5G. It's coming to you, and you cannot ignore it. So, so this is, you know, a cross-section of the movement, and once we're able to share with everybody, I hope we can create a video that goes viral, because, believe me, the content, the testimony of this range of beautiful human beings is very powerful. So, we'll be looking to get that to you. Say, "Oh, give us a week or so." I'm going to have to spend a lot of time editing, but it's a great story, for sure.
Now, what are you using for your base video? They actually were recording it?
Yeah, it's actual, you know, it's public testimony, it's on the county commissioners' you know, public access YouTube channel. It is, I mean, this is how, you know, our activist in the room, Natalina, was able to go back in midstream, pull the planning director's testimony from March 19th, and find his flat-out contradictory, you know, basically a perjury statement regarding how this is all about 5G with their land use regulations language change, and then his sworn testimony yesterday saying it had nothing to do with 5G.
Okay, let me ask you this.
There is a public video.
Okay, so, right now, we can access the public video?
I don't know how quickly they post it, but as soon as they do, and I'll be right on that today, we will share it with everybody, so you can all go see it yourself. I mean, okay--
What would be the website that you'd go to to find it? Do you know that, is it in front of you?
Well, let's see, let's do some searching here right now, if we're talking Taos County Commissioners, if we're talking, doo-doo-doo, County Commissioners, Public Hearing, Government Services, the emergency service departments, I want to, let's see, maybe a YouTube search for a channel might be the best way to go. Taos County, Taos County Commission Meeting. It comes right up, Taos County Commission Meeting, updated seven days ago. Taos County Regular Meeting, April 16th, March 19th. Yeah, well, we can pull up the March 19th meeting, where the guy said it was about 5G. They have not yet posted the most recent one, so it, you know, takes a few days, apparently, but we will be, we will be all over that. May 5th, 2017, da-da-da-da. Yeah, so we will let you folks know. As soon as we have access to it, we'll start editing it, but in the meantime, we'll share it with you. You're going to have to do a lot of fast-forwarding to get to the public testimony, because there's lots of really boring testimony from Mr. Davila, whatever his name is. So, yeah, that's dynamite.
When did she confront him on the perjury thing, at the end of his little talk?
Well, unfortunately, you know, in the sign-up sheet, Natalina was way down the sign-up sheet of the people who were testifying as part of the public hearing. So, but he was still sitting there, the commissioners are all sitting there, and she comes up, and she made a very simple, straightforward statement. She said, "We have been told that these land use regulations have nothing to do with 5G. Here is the quote from the planning director's testimony in this room on March 19th, under oath, quote-unquote, 'This is because of the applications.'" I mean, I read it to everybody just a second ago, I'll read it again, just for good measure. And it said, this is his quote, "We at the planning committee have been experiencing an influx of cell tower carriers who have been addressing our requirements, wanting to approve existing telecommunications infrastructure." I think it improved. "And the reason they are wanting to improve is the push to fifth generation." Five gen, he called it, and that's 5G, okay? So, you can't get away from the fact that five gen is just a synonym for 5G, okay? And then, you know, he began his testimony yesterday, saying, "We just think it would be important to understand that this actually doesn't have anything to do with the rollout of 5G." Except that he said, "The whole reason for the language change is, quote-unquote, 'the push to fifth generation.'" So, it is about as blatant as you could possibly imagine. So, that's, that initial testimony that it's about 5G is from the March 19th meeting, and then yesterday's video, once they post it, will include, and he says it several times, that it's not about 5G, until, at one point, one of the commissioners sort of nailed him down on it, and said, "Well, wouldn't this allow a backdoor to no permit process approval?" In other words, you know, the door's open, and there's no public hearings on it, and they just come in, and in it goes. And he had to say, "Well, yes, that's true." It's like, ah, okay, so this is all about 5G and a backdoor.
So, essentially, what they're doing is that they're saying-- So, essentially, what they're doing is that they're saying, "We're going to just upgrade, upgrade the cellular systems we have." That's where they're permitting, so they want to expand what they've got. But, because there's a backdoor, because now that you've got that already covered, all you have to do is turn on the 5G that will be part of the equipment when they put it in there.
Well, it's more complicated than that. I mean, it gets into, you know, FCC regulations. It was a lot about complying with FCC rules. It was about, you know, a permissible 20% increase in the cell tower height, but no higher than 20 feet higher than the previous one. And, you know, what was brought out was that, of course, we're not talking big mega-towers a mile apart. We're talking millimeter wave every couple hundred yards. Small cell tower densification, that's the issue. And to have a, you know, if 5G components are installed in the LED streetlights already there, well, that's a different public right-of-way. That's, you know, existing poles. It's not about, "Oh, we want to put a few more, you know, 4G towers on the existing big tower." You know, they've got, they've done an end-around. And if they can say, "Well, you know, the permit process is all streamlined," and that's the whole thing from the top down. You hear Tom Wheeler, you know, Chairman of the FCC, saying, "Well, we need to not be, you know, hampered by restrictive regulations at the local level. We need to just roll this thing out." And then the other guy at the White House meeting, telecommunications, you know, "Yeah, the 10th Amendment and everything, but we need to not let that get in the way." "Oh, it's just the Constitution of the United States, buddy, which you took an oath to uphold and protect." Never mind. "Ah, that 10th Amendment thing, that's kind of an encumbrance." So, anyway, yeah, that, basically, that's what it comes down to, is that, you know, if they've already got the infrastructure in place, if it turns out those innocent-looking LED streetlights in your neighborhood have already a public right-of-way access and a permit backdoor, oh, well, you know, that's just 5G already in place, and on it goes. And so, yeah, it's covert implementation, just like Mark Steele saw in Gateshead. That's what we're looking at the high likelihood of.
But in Great Britain, they call people that try to warn people terrorists, over here, they call, over here, they call them hysterical women.
Yeah, hysterical women. Yeah, that, I mean, it's amazing that anybody would try to use a phrase like that in the year 2019. You know, "Oh, by the way, the 100th anniversary of suffrage," you know. But this guy, Louis Reyes of Kit Carson Electric, went on the radio and actually said that in a radio interview. You know, so ignorant chauvinism is not dead yet, folks, as we know.
Didn't he throw him in with the hysterical women, like the vaccination, anti-vaccination?
Right, the same guy, yeah, the guy who was interviewing him. I actually said to Jeannie ahead, you know, Jeannie was gonna, Jeannie and Reese, our activist down there, "We're gonna go in, hey, we want to rebut this stuff. You know, we deserve a rebuttal to go in." And the guy said, "Okay, well, I'm not, you're not gonna get to talk about geoengineering, or chemtrails, or vaccines, okay?" And it's like, "What are you talking about? I haven't brought any of that stuff up. What, where are you coming from? We're talking about millimeter microwave radiation killing us, okay? So, we're not," you know, it was just, just kind of a grab-bag of what he'd been told these wacky hysterical ladies are gonna want to talk about. Never mind that, of course, all that other stuff is true.
That's, that's the thing, is that 5G is opening, why do they make the connection between 5G and all this other, other things? Because they're all connected. See, this is such a, I mean, the people of the world are, you know, not just going down the rabbit hole. My gosh, they're falling down the rabbit hole. They're getting sucked in. It's like, eh, you know? How can you even avoid it?
Yeah, exactly. And the sad thing was, I mean, for me, there was a moment there where we did have a woman get up to testify, and, you know, she's tall, rangy-looking, you know, obviously, an alternative lifestyle kind of person, and impassioned and well-informed. And she's, she's got her three minutes, and she starts to talk about 5G, but then she says, she goes in, she goes down the rabbit hole for three minutes. And part of me is just rolling my eyes, and I'm wincing, because I happen to agree with her about all the stuff she's bringing forward. I'm not saying that, you know, that I'm absolutely convinced of every aspect of it, but she's saying, you know, "They're bombarding us with geoengineering particles, which are being activated by 5G, which the 20,000 satellites overhead are giving us," you know, and then there's, "These are showing up in people's bodies. There's Morgellons disease." And she's going down that rabbit hole in front of the Commissioners. And I'm going, you know, of course, ironically, most of that is true, you know? I mean, there's pro and con, and some of it's disinformation to make us look wacky, but, you know, by and large, in the end, conspiracy theories that are wacky one year turn out to be accepted two or three years later, like hello Edward Snowden and NSA spying on all of us. So, it was ironic, you know? I mean, for me to be sitting there as, as an activist, as somebody who's been interviewed, you know, on alternative news sites, you know, just kind of wincing because somebody's coming out, going down the rabbit hole too far in front of the County Commissioners. But, you know, you gotta choose your moment.
Well, you know, again, going back to the Tea Party. Now, I didn't follow the Tea Party. I've looked at it since it came and went. I mean, I hardly knew it was there, except that it was, "What is this thing?" you know? And now it fascinates me. But one of the women who were at a rally that was like in a baseball field, and there was just this little RV with like a makeshift stage on it, and she's, she's sobbing, absolutely sobbing, trying to explain how a corporation has taken over the republic.
Yeah.
And now, from the standpoint of the Tea Party people there, somebody that was that, almost verging on hysteria, out of absolute grief, would have been a great embarrassment.
Yeah.
Okay? And, yeah, and I was not, like I say, I was not all over the Tea Party, you know, thought it was a bunch of, you know, just people with time on their hands or whatever. And then, when I saw her, I was like, "I don't know what to make of this person. You know, what's happening here?" And what happened was that her passion led me to look at what I would never have looked at otherwise, the fact that the corporation had taken over the republic. And I confirmed everything that she said, and wrote a blog about it. And then, a couple of years later, I read the blog, and I went, "Is this true?" And I researched it again, went even deeper. So, I know that that, but that woman, even though she might have, you know, so what I'm saying is that if you only had one that did this, maybe, maybe she'll hit somebody out there that takes the next step.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And, you know, I'll probably include some of that woman's testimony if I can, if I can work it in. Yeah. One of, I do want to share with you one thing, Nancy, with, share with everybody. So, at the post-game debriefing with our team, there are about 18 of us there, great group of people, our technical experts, Dr. Goldberg, Reese and Jeannie and Falcon. I was sitting next to a woman who had testified, and this is a professional therapist who had a thriving practice, who just developed electromagnetic sensitivity, and, you know, absolutely could not be around Wi-Fi at all, and, you know, lost, couldn't live in her home, had to live in her car just to be able to sleep, and to drive her car somewhere where it was, you know, where there was no coverage. And, and this is, you know, a very together, intelligent, well-balanced woman. And in fact, there was another person there who had experienced the same thing. They're, you know, they're living in their cars because electromagnetic sensitivity has got them, you know, unable to, to find anyplace else to be. And so, I'm sitting next to this, this lady, her name was Rowan, and I thought, "Oh, you know, I've got a Cosmic Reality business card here. I'm just going to say, 'Hey, Rowan, you, you know, you need to live in a Shungai environment. 5G, you know, Shungai's not gonna help you. But while we are engaged in this fight, we know, we need people like you to be safe, to be able to, you know, live, to have a home, to, you know, be.'" Here you've got this eloquent activist, you know, living under extreme duress because of, but, you know, it's becoming an epidemic, this kind of sensitivity. I know people here in Southern Colorado who are experiencing the same thing. So then I realized, "Well, wait a minute. I should actually just stand up and address everybody." And so I took a moment, first of all, to encourage everybody, "Hey, let's not get bogged down in a, in a small, dirty, long fight with Kit Carson Electric to try to get an opt-out on your smart meters. You've got an opportunity to have an impact at the state level, and possibly with influence to, to the governor's office in crafting legislation that's gonna make New Mexico a model state for Safe Wire technology. And oh, by the way, while we're engaged in that fight, we all need to be healthy. We all need to have the maximum protection possible from existing EMF and Wi-Fi. So, hey, I made a pitch for Shungai, and I said, 'And here's the best source, and, you know, there's smart meter stickers, and, you know, there's pendants, and there's,' you know, I, okay, I made an unabashed sales pitch for Shungai, because we've got to be protecting ourselves, you know, while we are engaged in this fight. We've got to be, you know, sharing with all of our friends and the world. And maybe we're not gonna be able to get a Shungai environment to everybody, but we can protect a whole lot of folks. So, and, you know, I started by saying, "Hey, show of hands, how many people at this table know what Shungai is?" And it was about two-thirds. But some of them, actually, you know, one woman pulled out an Elite Shungai Nugget from her pocket. And I said, "That's great. You don't need Elite, by the way. Raw is good. Check out cosmicreality.net." Anyway, it feels like, you know, to me, you and I talked about this earlier, when, you know, I was talking about a sacred activism tour and waking people up, that there'd be the 5G wake-up component, and there'd also be the protect yourself in the meantime component of what I'm sharing with people as I, as I go around. And so it was great to see that and see the response, and to see, I mean, you've, you've said it, you know, I mean, there's this strange receptivity out there. You just say, "Shungai," and it's hard to describe it, and I don't know, just part of Gaia's presence in our souls just kind of wakes up and goes, "Shungai? Tell me more," you know? Have you experienced that?
From the very beginning, one of the things that amazed me was, well, there was two things. First off, if, and also other people that were working with me to kind of spread it, to find out what, what people were feeling about it, when you would put the Shungai in your hand to, to show somebody, they would grab it.
Yeah.
Okay? And the other thing was that if you said the word "Shungai" in a group of people, everybody stopped what they were doing to listen to you. It was spooky.
It's like that old commercial from, what, the 80s, you know? "Well, my stockbroker is E.F. Hutton, and he says," and then the whole room stops and everybody turns, right? E.F. Hutton says.
Exactly. Exactly, because it seemed like the word somehow or another triggered something in people's subconscious.
Yeah, it's like you go, "My production is Shungai," and Shungai, and suddenly everybody goes, "What? Who?" You know, all the heads turn. Yeah.
And as far as selling it, you know, the thing of it is, is that I could never sell anything. I was a terrible salesperson. But with Shungai, I don't think of it as anything other than trying to get people help. Yes, we have to charge you for it. We can't, we don't, we have to make a living at this. Otherwise, we can't do it, you know? And, so, it, to me, is I'm gifting you, even though you've got to pay me some energy back so I can gift others, is the way I look at it. So, thank you for, for standing up for, for what we know will help people. We've been at this for five years, over five years now. And, you know, I mean, thousands and thousands and thousands of people, the fact that you had that many people know about Shungai, you know, well, we started that back in 14. Nobody knew about Shungai, not even the mineral dealers.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So, you know, I called it out to them, cosmicreality.net. I'll call that out here. I mean, most of our listeners are familiar with Cosmic Reality and Cosmic Reality Shungai. But it's, it's an amazing gift of Gaia, and it's got so much dynamic potential in so many areas. I continue to be kind of amazed at, you know, all the things we are continuing to learn that Shungai can give.
Yeah, and Derek has managed to get ahold of an electronic microscope?
Oh.
Okay, so, that's, actually, that's why we did a replay yesterday, because he was, he was working on this project, because people want all this scientific, you know, certification. And it costs money, money that we never had. Well, now, we not so much have the money, but we have people who are supporting us, that are working with us to give us the tools by which we can get more accurate and, you know, look more deeply at what Shungai's doing, particularly to the blood. Because it, you know, we've already done some, some of the blood testing. We know what it does. But the presentation of it confuses people. So, we want to go, we want to go back and look at it. Like, one of the things that is very key, that, and, you know, if we find out that what we think is gonna happen doesn't happen, believe me, we will tell you. We're in this for the research. We want to understand it. We don't have to be right, but we do have to know. So, when we're looking at this type of thing in the blood, one of the real problems with people and animals is dehydration. And when you realize that you're dehydrated, and you start to try to get enough water, that's still going to take, you know, virtually, I forget, it's so long that it seems incredible to me, but at least, you know, like a day before your body is gonna get back into a hydrated state. And I believed from the get-go that if you drank Shungai energized water, you would immediately hydrate. And I, we don't have the film of that, but I had talked to Karen Barr, who was the RN that did the original work with the videos. And I said to her, "If you ever find anybody who's dehydrated, would you please run that experiment?" And she came back, and she said, "You're absolutely right." Immediately, the cells rehydrated.
Wow.
So, we need to get that kind of scientific verification. And that's why we've got the electronic microscope. So, he's been posting on the Shungai Reality Facebook group, Shungai Reality, videos that he's, that he's doing, you know? He's having quite a nice time. And to look at the molecular structure of Shungai, I mean, well, not molecular, but you write down on, you know, it's an electronic microscope, you're, you know, the forensic type, you know? And he's getting, so, I don't even know where he's gonna take this, but he's, you know, he's working with Dr. Todd, who's the guy, people haven't seen this. There is a muscle testing video that Dr. Todd, who's a very well-known naturalist in that Seattle area, he and Derek got together. And I don't know, I mean, you gotta see it, just simply because, if you understand muscle testing, you're gonna get this. Muscle testing is very simple. You can just Google it and find out a whole bunch about it. We're gonna do more on this, this subject. But it was actually Derek was being muscle tested, and Dr. Todd kept taking different, different products and showing, "Well, yep, this is good. This is good." And all of a sudden, and Derek was like, not looking down at all. And he didn't know what was being put up against his stomach to, you know, be the evidence to the witnessing of the muscle testing. And all of a sudden, he got startled, because what Dr. Todd had put was a marshmallow, but it was a big one. It was like nothing. And, but you could see on Derek's face, he got startled. And so then, he goes back to putting on, you know, magnets and his Shungai things. And all of a sudden, again, there's a startled, and his arm goes down, but he's actually startled before the arm goes down, Derek was. And, because I kept going back watching it, because his face was so, it absolutely gave you, you know, a complete rendition of what he was feeling. Something happened that I don't like, you know? don't like, you know? And Dr. Todd says, "See?" And he holds up a Hershey's bar and he says, "It's not chocolate." I was laughing hysterically, I mean, it was so funny, that little, little blurb. But you can see, you know, the muscle testing. But again, that muscle testing is very well-understood by metaphysicians, but your standard human beings, they don't understand it unless they've actually been muscle tested, then they start to understand.
It's access to, you know, the subconscious level that has, you know, biological effects. I mean, people who are familiar with Dr. Bruce Lipton and the Biology of Belief is his very famous book on this subject. And he works closely with founder of Psych K, my friend Rob Williams. And then they use muscle testing to, to access the level of subconscious beliefs. And it's, you know, it's a pretty amazing situation there of, of the efficacy and, and real, solid information that can be gained through muscle testing.
And I want to, I want to thank you for the newsletter. Now, those people that don't know that there's a Cosmic Reality newsletter, please go over to cosmicreality.net and sign up. Because the newsletters, Michael and Eleni, or his wife, are putting them together for us. And when you see these, you're gonna get information. And I, I believe that he's running promotions, but I, I'm kind of vague on what it was this week. But normally, there's a promotion of sales or whatever. But you can also, you know, look at the past ones if you want more information than sometimes we just can do in a short radio program.
Yeah, it's, we're, we're very privileged and happy. It's, it's great to work with the unfolding story of, of Shungai. We're, we're coming up on, on the end of the show and there's something I want to share with people. As I said, yeah, we got a defeat in the county commissioners in Taos yesterday. Ultimately, it's a, it's a victory. Dan Lotz, the former FAA official who was there the whole time with us, said, at the, after the meeting, said, "Hey, this is a huge win. I hope you people realize what a huge win you had today." Because there's a movement, hundreds of people showed up, eloquent testimony, expert testimony, you know, this was a huge win in terms of demonstrating that there's a movement out there and now it can have potentially affect at the state level in New Mexico. But because we have to share a lot of grim news with you, I wanted to just offer, there's a website I came across. You know, we all go down the rabbit hole a lot here and it's great to be able to have a go-to place that presents solid evidence without, you know, hysterics or disinformation or stuff you're not so sure about. It's called wanttoknow.info. And I'm gonna share right now, I'm gonna put it up here on our, our little text situation here. And it's 10 Reasons for Hope and Optimism. This is from wanttoknow.info. And they've got just really great, solid articles in here covering all the, the things that you hear us talking about here. Are we still, are you still there with me, Nancy?
Yeah, I'm here.
Oh, okay. It sounded like a drop-down.
No, no.
Yeah, okay, so wanttoknow.info, 10 Reasons for Hope and Optimism. And so despite all this bad news out there, here's 10 inspiring trends that shows in the words of the article that we are not screwed. Despite the challenges, there are many great reasons for hope and optimism. I just want to run through this quick list here to give everybody a lift as we, as we close out. And they give links at each one of these reasons I'm gonna present at wanttoknow.info. So here's 10 Reasons to Become Not Fearmongers But Hopemongers. That's who we really are. We are hope-spreaders, hope-mongers. Reason number one, humans are not lemmings. Global population is actually leveling off, leveling off, all right? So the overpopulation thing is real and yet, we're not that stupid, we are leveling off. Number two, solar power is cheaper than coal, gas and oil. Number three, the internet miracle, unprecedented networking and information access. Reason number four for hope, children are more loved and supported now than in past generations. Number five, violent crime has dropped dramatically and wars are less vicious. There are still wars. And now, as we know, they're moving to energy weapon wars and 5G, but violent crime has dropped dramatically. Number six, the focus is shifting politically from left versus right to the 99% versus the 1%. And then the final shift is it's about the human family. It's not about any faction versus another, it's about all of us coming together as a human family. There are measurable trends of that happening. Number seven, the man behind the curtain has been exposed. The global power elite is being exposed and they cannot put that genie back in the bottle. There is no going back on the exposure of the elite pedophile network, of false flags, of the factions behind 5G. They've got nowhere to run, nowhere to hide. That justice is coming. Number eight, interest in personal growth and consciousness expansion is on the rise. So number nine, love and cooperation are rocking our world. And number 10, you can be master of your own life now. There's so many ways of, of working with our personal growth. So I just wanted to share that. Again, that is wanttoknow.info, really solidly sourced, alternative information. So that's, that's my good news. Thanks, everybody, for, for being with us today on Radio 5G. This is Michael Henry Dunn with my co-host Nancy L. Hopkins. And Radio 5G is a joint project of Cosmic Reality Radio from cosmicreality.net and the Sacred Academy of Geoenergetics, acronym SAGE, in Creston, Colorado. Nancy, do you want to take us out with any final words of benediction here?
Just thank you all for what you did, what you're gonna do, and thank the people who are just starting to understand, you gotta stand up.
Amen to that. God bless, everybody. Have a great week. See you next time.